Yes.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started and uh call meeting order and Miss Lilly's gonna do the pledge and Mike's gonna do the invocation for us. You all rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and indivisible, and every being and justice for all.
Let's pray. My Father which art in heaven, we thank thee for this day. Dear my Father, pray for our country. And I pray for the people of our country. And dear my Father, that somehow that we can start turning our our eyes and our faith towards you. Dear my Father, just pray for our city. And just pray that dear my Father, you have us as commissioners to do the right thing for our city. For us this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank y'all. Roll call please ma'am.
Ms. Ms. Granberry? Not present.
Not present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
All right, we got two sets of minutes to approve, one from a study session of June the thirteenth and one from the regular meeting of the eighteenth. Once you've had the chance to review, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion of approval of the study session minutes as well as the commission meeting of the eighteenth.
All right, we got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, awards, presentations, and appointments. We have a local company here that we're proud to have with us, a presentation by Dr. Mike Kyler and Carl and I don't know who else.
It does.
Okay.
You said seven minutes, so we didn't.
The podium is yours.
We gotta set up on prop so you can actually see what's going on here, so Carl will get that together in just a second. Notice that Ms. Granberry didn't make it tonight, so but.
City manager.
Okay. All right, all right. Well, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, and fellow citizens, it's it's truly an honor for us to be with you tonight, present to you the locator nine one one safety device, light bulb. And to recommend to the Commission the locator nine one one light bulb to be placed within city code for high density housing and new construction. Each year approximately two hundred and forty million calls come into nine one one center. And when emergency personnel leave the centers, they're not worried about what they're gonna do, they're trained well. But they know exactly what they're gonna do when they get there. But their biggest problem is locating the scene, people who need the help. And you say, well, we got GPS, that's true, GPS will get you within a block or two. And also you would say, well, but we know a lot about this and we've got it under control, but there's there's four main reasons why it's hard to locate people. A third to half the houses in Mount Pleasant have numbers on them that are not readable, or if they have numbers at all. Then you have night, and you have fog, and you have rain, and you have numbers that are very small and not readable. Then you have high density housing, you have apartments and condominiums and townhouses that potentially could be coming. And the problem with that is you have building A and it sits here and building B sits over here and building C sits over here. Where where are you trying to go? And then our last issue as far as locating is Google Earth. Google Earth updates its map every six to nine months. So when every new construction site, home development, EMS is going in, and emergency personnel is going in totally blind for the first six to nine months. It's usually not on their maps. Our, um, this is not just a local problem, it's a nationwide problem. And we've known it for years, but there hasn't been a solution. And the reason why this bulb exists is Jonathan Harrison, who was a paramedic at Murray Regional Medical Center Ambulance Service, got a call. While he was on duty, they got a call of child respiratory distress. They put the coordinates into their GPS and they took off down Highway two seventy-three towards Calioka. They got, it was night, they got to the point, the GPS said, you've arrived, and there was nothing. So they continued rolling down the road for another quarter of a mile, and they finally found the mailbox with the number on it. And they turned in the driveway, when they did, there was mailbox A, B, C, and D. There were four houses back that road. So they pulled down into the middle, jumped, Jonathan got out, he got his jump bag, and he ran to a house that he thought it might be because there was a light on, beat on the door and got no response. He went to another house where the light was on, and when he arrived at the door, there was a mother in the floor, practically doing CPR on a child who was deceased. And the response times were delayed over eight minutes. Seconds count and minutes are the difference between life and death. But we have the solution. This solution, we've been working on for eight years, and the solution is a strobing, patented trademark strobing four colored light bulb that's visible for a quarter to a half a mile in day and miles at night. And when you don't need the light to be strobing in an emergency situation, it's just a white light sitting on your front porch, regular light with no problem at all. And there's five key important points to this. Number one, seconds count, minutes are the difference between life and death, need to be found. This will get you found. Next is protection for emergency personnel. You can see on TV quite frequently where emergency personnel go in the wrong house. Sometimes it gets ugly. Jonathan, Danny both can tell you when they had guns pulled on when they went in the wrong house and the homeowner, I mean, they don't know who you are or what's going on. And then they leave and go to the next house, but protection for emergency personnel is the second. The next two are homeowner issues. This homeowner can activate this light without calling nine one one. So if there's a two legged critter or four legged critter out in their yard, a noise outside of their house, they can activate this bulb. And in most cases, the two or four legged critters will leave. But also if the homeowner's coming home at night and they're coming into their house in the dark from their car or from their driveway, they can activate the white light so they can get in and out of their house more safely. And then the other one, the last one, is just as important really as the first one, and that is community watch. When you call nine one one, there's only two people in the world who know there's an emergency going on, it's your location. That's the dispatcher that you called and you. That's it, nobody else knows. Now, you got a loved one in the floor, you gonna stop doing CPR to try to go out and flag down an ambulance? You gonna leave your loved one, or are you just, what are you gonna do? That's the question. Also, this lets it be visible so that other people can come in and help, neighbors. We live in a small town, neighbors will help neighbors. And if there's an emergency going on at Ms. Smith's house, you're gonna go and see if you can go in and help before emergency services get there, and thank goodness we've got great emergency services who get there quite frequently. They've come several times to my office and done a great job. But this, it's very, very important to be found. We have been endorsed by several organizations, and I would like you, you have a letter in your package there, and this is from Mike Dunlop, who is the Amnest Director at Murray Regional Medical Center. I'm writing to endorse an incredibly innovative product that has significantly impacted the way we perform emergency services here in Murray Regional Health, the locator nine one one. As the emergency director, I am constantly on the lookout for advancements that can improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our response to emergencies. The locator nine one one has been a game changer in that regard. Its integration into our system has been seamless and the benefits immediate. Locator nine one one is designed with both the emergency responders and the community in mind. It emits a bright flashing light that is easily activated in an emergency, making the location of the crisis unmistakable by first responders. This simple yet ingenious solution has reduced our average response times, which is critical in a profession where every second counts. The durability and reliability of locator nine one ones withstood diverse situations from severe weather conditions to the hustle routine call, and its user friendly nature ensures that no additional training is required, which is invaluable to our team. I witnessed firsthand how this product saves precious time and incompetent its continued utility in an emergency, visibility is paramount. The locator nine one one excellently fulfills this need, providing a beacon of hope to those awaiting assistance and helping us carry out our duties more effectively. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly endorse the locator nine one one for any health service facility, emergency response organization, or community looking to enhance its emergency response capabilities. This product truly stands out for its simplicity, its effectiveness, and its potential to save lives. And if you need further information, you can contact him, you have letters that show that. Locator nine one one bulb, if approved by this commission, will be at Ace Hardware and will be on our website. For the safety and the well being of the citizens of Mount Pleasant and for the safety of our emergency response personnel, and with the support of Fire Chief Stewart and Police Chief Hay, Murray Regional Health Systems EMS Director Mike Dunlop, Murray County Sheriff Bucky Rowland, and with the support of the Director of Codes, Planning, and Building, Chris Brooks, we request that the Commission to add to the city codes the locator nine one one light bulb, and it be required for occupancy for high density housing and for new construction. Any questions?
Mike, uh, I guess like my house on the front porch, I don't have, I guess, one switch or light, you know, front porch has three, three lights, I think that's right. So how would that work if I left a switch on?
You can put it in a fixture in your window in the front of the house.
Oh, okay.
And it'll be very visible. We have them in Wyndham in Columbia and some of the folks in Wyndham, but we have two different bulbs, this is the Freedom bulb and it's worked with a fob, Carl's got the fob, it's very simple, easy to use, very, very simple. The other works off a cellphone and an app, two point four gigahertz router. But when we got that bulb out, we had a whole lot of folks that were in the age bracket that needed this, but they didn't have a router, didn't have a smartphone. So in Wyndham, when we put it in there, most are these, but there are some places that have lights on, three different lights on the front of the house, and they have that in the front window, and you can see it just fine. And response times by the fire department who gets there first usually, we're very fortunate to have them as first responders if they can see it fine.
But I guess although I got three lights, I could put those three bulbs and I'd still have just a white light.
Right. Until I did. Unless you need it, otherwise.
Okay.
Unless you need it otherwise.
Three, three might be better than one.
Well, really, you can, now, I would suggest, do you have a router at your house?
Yes.
I would suggest you getting the other, and the reason why is the other has the app and, but you can put in ten bulbs on it, and it'll all activate when you dial nine one one. So with the other with the app, you, and you can have ten to twelve people in your house if you want to, hooked up to the same app and it will activate the bulb and control the bulb. But you can have, you name each bulb, we don't know how many bulbs you can activate off, but we haven't found out yet. But you, three bulbs you can easily do, we got a video that we could have shown that shows a guy that has, how many bulbs he has, eight, I think it was, and they're all going off, you could land an airplane in his house. That's probably a little overkill, but in your situation, if you have three, you can name each bulb, you can turn each bulb on and off individually.
Okay.
You can set them to come on, dust the dome, or you can just turn them on on your phone. But the great thing about it is in the app, if you have an emergency situation, it says on the, you hit the app and it says dial nine one one, keypad comes up, you dial nine one one, same number steps, if you pull your phone out and you hit the the area for phone and you hit the the digital pad to call, so it's the same number steps. But in your case, if you got three, I would go with the locator, the original locator bulb.
When you say the original locator bulb, Mike, are you saying the one or the or the one that's?
The one that works off the app, this one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It works off the app, and those are the ones.
Those are the ones that I, okay.
Yes.
Mike, you got to put in your name.
Got to take that, that's all, okay.
But there's two different bulbs.
Okay.
And we have a patent pending on a bulb that goes on mailboxes for out in the country, so you're not mailboxes, excuse me, the post the mailbox sits on, because the citizen owns the post, the mailbox is federal property. But it would be on that, it would be activated by cell service. So not only would you have one at the house, you would also have one at the road.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike?
I'm just, what are we, we, we're not voting on this tonight, you're suggesting it's something that we might want to consider.
Here's what we're gonna do, and I've already told Mike this, Cory is out until August the first, we want Cory to get a look in, because it would require an ordinance.
Right.
And so we want to get Cory to get a look at this before we say yes, because again, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight because it's an ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
And I believe she's talked to Chris Brooks as well.
Yes, I think so.
Yes, Chris has very much invited, so.
So that's where, that's kind of where we are with it. Anything else, Mike?
Mike?
I guess when you say that, but if a person wants one, he can go ahead and get them.
Buy it right now.
Yes, you can get it right now, no problem at all.
Okay.
No problem at all.
None whatsoever.
You're just asking us to require.
Right, sure, yes, that's what, I just wanted to make sure, you know.
You can go to the app, if you look on the back of that, there's a QR code, gonna take you straight to the website and you can get it. Been working with Jay, goes here as an Ace Hardware, city approves it, it'll be stocked right there, anybody can go get it.
Okay, but it's not there yet.
Nope, but they're all right, fire department.
Oh, okay. Very good.
You should, they could just keep pointing down the line.
So there's a way to do it, and, but it's, we have had testimonies from, we have them in fifty states, and we have them in housing, high density housing areas, pitch five and older communities in Delaware, Florida, Tennessee, Connecticut, or Illinois, yeah. So it's, it's been tried, it's been proven, we've been slow to make sure that everything is in order and everything is in order, and we want to start in Mount Pleasant. This is our home and this is where all four of us that started in, mayor, we will become to see you.
Good.
And I hope that the city of Columbia would consider the same situation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Carl, I can tell Brother Ed that you got business going on in fifty states.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank y'all again, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, Mayor's Appointing Board of Zoning Appeals, we talked about this Thursday night, but it's gonna be Mr. Terry Brewer and he will be replacing Chris Irwin. Chris is now serving on the Planning Commission, and we've got the representative from the Planning Commission already own the BZA, so Terry will be replacing Chris.
Finish out for two more years.
Yes, and we need to vote on each one of these, by the way. So do we have a motion to accept Mr. Brewer as a board member of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I make a motion that we accept Terry Brewer as a board member of the zoning appeals.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Next one we got is Mount Pleasant Historic Zoning Commission, and Ms. Freddie Walker has agreed to serve again. So she's already on there and she's done a good job for us, so entertain a motion to continue to have her as part of that.
Make a motion to retain Freddie Walker as part of the Historic Zoning Commission.
So I have a second.
Thank you.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Completion or review of unfinished business, monthly report from mayor, and I said this Thursday night, but I want to reiterate again, thanks to Smelter Service for their support of our July the fourth event, I think it went over well, Phillip's gonna talk a little bit more and mention a few other people here during his report, but that's, that's really all I have. Monthly financial budget report, Ms. Schiffer? By the way, there will not be a Mount Pleasant Power System report because of the way this crazy month falls, their meeting's not till tomorrow morning.
Budget for the end of the year should not be approved.
Aye, okay. It's all yours.
We had our budget approved by the Comptroller's Office on June twenty eighth, two days shy of June thirtieth, so if you guys remember, last year we were running a little behind, this year we were early, so that was great. I think we received a response in like less than a week, they, we sent the document in and within a week we had the letter back and something that.
Almost hours.
Yeah, it was, it was quick, and it was like right at the end of the day on June, well, June twenty eighth was June thirtieth for us in a way, because that was the last working day, so we were pretty excited in the finance office and especially like the bottom section of the first page, like I don't see that a lot in Comptroller's Office letters where they actually commended us on our whole packet. So they said, as a commission, as a finance office, we did a great job with our ordinance, our documentation was very organized, so I'm hoping we'll get TGFOA when we go for, which is our Tennessee Government Accounting Officers Association, when we go to that training this year, they usually present a list of the cities that get those commitments, so hopefully our name is gonna be in there this year. I sent out the financials on Friday, they're all preliminary, you guys probably noticed that, books are not gonna be closed till August, we have still a lot of funds to receive as far as our sales tax, the state revenues, all of that usually doesn't even get here till the twentieth of every month, so we haven't even received all the June revenue from the state of Tennessee and the federal revenues that we usually get, they'll all be here hopefully by the end of this week. And then technically that revenue is May revenue, and in August we actually get our June revenue, because the state runs two months behind on all that revenue, so that's gonna be our deferred and stuff, so audits already started. We started all of that in the month of June, audit has started, budget's approved, I'm trying to think about what else we're doing, closing the books, the girls have set up our next goal, and that's hopefully getting the national award, which I think city of Columbia gets their GFOA award every year, so I'm probably gonna be reaching out to that because at the county we had a kind of a hard time because all your affiliate governments that work, our budget is not the only budget I submit, the power company's budget goes with us. So as long as all the organizations work together well and they get all their stuff done in a timely manner, and of course the electric company is always doing their stuff in a timely manner, we should be able to apply for that next year, that's our goal. We have, insurance rates were looked at last month, our insurance went up eight percent for our medical, and we budgeted fifteen percent, so we looked at the numbers last month and we're gonna go ahead and assume the cost, so we will not be passing any of the cost over to the employees. Water and sewer rates were approved by y'all in April of last year, so right around the time I started, ordinance number was two, twenty twenty-three one one oh nine, and with that ordinance, the rates were approved for, the rate increases were approved for last year and this year to go up, so that's something that is going to hit this month's billing when we run it at the end of the month. Between August and September, you all will see the new billing software pickup where you will not receive postcards anymore, so that's our goal on that billing section that I mentioned last month is the actual paper bills will hopefully be the August billing that you get at the end of August, beginning of September. Don't want to send too much change in one billing packet, because with the rates changing, I was like, let's just do one thing each month. I don't have anything else, just really that, the financials, I will have more details as we close the books. I sent you all everything the way it was on June thirtieth, but we are, like I said, we're still receiving invoices at revenue, so there'll be adjustments all the way up until August that we have to put back, but I'm here if you all have any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you for doing an amazing job.
Thank you. No, the, I, I do, you know what, I did forget that, I do want to commend my staff. I, when I came in, it was a lot of change, I think everybody knew there was major changes, and they have all just been like, what do you need us to do? If they don't have something going on, they're always just like, you know, what do we need to do next, what do we need to do next, and they are the ones who are sometimes setting the goals, and that's, I like to see that because I feel like sometimes I might be, I can be too much, I feel like, and then they're like, no, we want to do this, and I was like, okay, great, if you guys are on board, let's move forward, but we're in the middle of a lot of change and we have been for about eighteen months now and, but it's good, it's all good and we're working towards bigger and better goals, so.
All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the June monthly financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Monthly report from City Manager, Phillip.
Mayor.
First trip, brother.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, almost three weeks in, transition with Kate is going smoothly. Like take the opportunity to appreciate you guys for allowing me to work in this capacity, so thank you for that. Making an announcement, Todd Stewart is our interim fire chief, it's in the monthly report, and also Ben Willard back there is assistant fire chief, so congratulations to them, that's a position I dearly enjoyed and loved and so, but, we, so over the next few weeks, I haven't had a chance yet, I do want to meet with department heads, even though I've worked with some of them for a decade now or more and even stout, just talking to them and make sure that, knowing that the transition's going smoothly, so I'll be doing that over the next few weeks. I don't know if you notice when we come in, the fresh paint in the lobby, so, yeah, fresh paint in the lobby's going on. One of the things that that I've started looking into is, I'll try to get in front of the parts commission in the near future, but the aeromines part, the bathroom there, so moving forward with that, hope to have that done in twenty twenty-four, but we'll see how it goes. The Fourth of July, the, of the fireworks show, I have to say a big thanks to our staff, Ben and Assistant Chief Burgett, they were a huge, huge help, and I have to say, with Haberly and Jennifer's in the office tonight with Main Street, couldn't have done it without them, so a special thanks to them, that was, that was amazing, the work you guys did for that. Moving forward to next month, so next month, and this is something that hadn't happened over two or three weeks, we'll have our water engineer Ricky Oakley here, some of the projects that we've been talking about with like meters, skid, water filter system, so we should have it all put together and he should be here to present those, those projects and estimated costs that may go into the future, so none of that's coming probably next month. And then we started two week water survey next week for water loss, so maybe those results next month, we're bringing back to you and share that. And lastly, I know in front of you, you guys have this flyer, it's water day, put on by our water utility department, July thirty first, and just community engagement, come out, hot dogs for the community, so that's something they're doing that's, I think would be pretty nice. And that's all I have, you have any questions for me?
Yep.
None for Phillip?
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip. Reports from other departments, wastewater liaison, Barge is on.
So Barge, we covered some of this, or we covered it all Thursday night, but Rainy Street improvement project, it is closed out, so that's finalized. The wastewater treatment plant, we talked in detail, still waiting on a few things, I know they did some pothole in the transformer, trying to get that inspection so they can set that. The wastewater model project, so baseline has been complete, now they're looking at the capacity of the tools and looking at future projects, improvement projects in the future, so that's ongoing. And the sewer trunk line rehab is closed out, but we're waiting for the new plant to come online, because it's search ours, pull it down so we can do that final inspection.
Good. Any questions on Barge stuff? Gas system, any report? Flop time of year?
Yes, the gas system's the same, we're still looking at opportunities to be able to upgrade the gate station and cherry glen, so still looking at that.
Okay, good. All right, new business, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant Power System. We discussed this Thursday night, and we, we do this on these next three, but they will at least require a vote, so it's just the payment in lieu of taxes that we do every year, and it is part of the budget.
And it is a big deal.
It is a big deal. Go ahead, Willie.
I make a motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen as presented.
Got a motion, we have a second. We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant Gas Department. Any, any questions? Go ahead, ma'am.
Make a motion, we approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, resolution approving agreement for payment in lieu of taxes to the Mount Pleasant Admissible Housing Authority. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. Make a motion, we accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen as presented.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Travis, you want to come on forward, ma'am? Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, resolution approving a pilot program agreement related to Project Major Oak, which will be in Cherry Glen.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity. It's always good to be, uh, in front of you all. And I'm happy to take any questions you have. I think the resolution spells out what's being requested pretty well. But I think, uh, this is an exciting project that's a, that's a good fit for the community and be a positive thing for the park. But I'm, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
I love this pilot. Get a hundred percent of real, day one. All right.
I was just gonna say, Travis, I appreciate what y'all do for our cities. Not only our city, but our county as well, but especially, you know, for Mount Pleasant. I appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you very much, sir.
Without y'all, we, without y'all, we wouldn't be here, I will say that.
You're too kind of, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion for approval of the pilot.
I make a motion that we approve the pilot. Pilot payment in lieu of taxes agreement plays to Project Major Oak.
Got a motion, we have a second. I got a number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Barge Master, Master Professional Services Agreement.
Mayor Commissioner, so Barge is a company that we've used for several years for the service agreement for the next twelve months. In your packet would be the agreement and then also the general wastewater system assistance that we get. It's estimated at fifty thousand dollars. And then also a task order for the lagoon's, um, inspection, which is sixty-five hundred dollars.
We went over this Thursday. Um, any questions on it? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve Master Professional Services Agreement.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Emergency air-condition purchase at Fire Hall and a good Lord knows it was needed. Or is still maybe, Todd, I don't know.
That, that one, it owed him sixty-nine degrees right now, but it cost me fourteen hundred dollars and killed.
Well, we get it fixed, that's a good, we got it ordered, everything's on way, right? Okay, good. All right, we need a motion to approve the emergency, don't we?
Yeah, we definitely need to do it because we need to cut out the.
Fuel, it just keeps things go up.
Now they don't have to need a motion, it's just letting you guys know.
Fair enough, just making sure. I just, I just wanted to make sure. Jack says there's no, somebody signed up to speak? Mike, you got anything else?
No, sir, I'm good.
Really?
I'm good.
Man?
Just want to thank Smelter again for helping us with October the fourth of July. And it was just such a great success. Thanks to everybody.
I got one last thing, Chad. Mayor, thank you. You have, uh, been here when we needed you and thank you. Thank you, and we appreciate it. And I, I want to say thank you for the relationship that we now have between Columbia and Mount Pleasant. It's excellent.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, it's been an honor. I do believe Ms. Jones will be back next month and that she's looking forward to it. But being able to sort of see how the city of Mount Pleasant works so efficiently and being able to work with both Kate and Phillip and all the others, it's been a pleasure and honor. I'll come back anytime you'll have me.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.